Know about the mother's room.
Okay.
Seventy thousand, how many mother's rooms? Is there going to be one in the sheriff's department, one in this part, one over in the social services? I mean, what are we getting for seventy thousand dollars for a mother's room?
It's a, it's a single space, but it includes, you know, uh, you know, comfortable carpeted area. It'll have like a sink and a refrigerator, and so we have to cover the plumbing work that's involved in that. Um, so that's really what it is.
Are these kind of requirements now, though, the mother's room, that if you do the remodeling process, is that part of the equation? Or, cause there's not now, or is?
By Cory's office, I think.
Yep.
Which is not a very pleasant place to be, but that's.
I just didn't know how that.
I don't know where, I don't know what they do at social service, uh, Paul.
Is it a mandate?
We do have one, I think, that public health has made available in their area. But yeah, it's, it's difficult for a lot of folks to access it.
I will say that, um, if we're purely building a new facility, it's required. We would have to have it. When we look at a renovation, there's a lot of things that we could figure out a way not to do. From the rehabilitation code standpoint. But the reality is when we're talking about supporting staff and making it a better working environment. This is absolutely one of those things that most people are like, it, yeah, you have to do it, we're gonna do it.
And, and if you recall, if you recall in our last meeting, we just adopted a new policy. Or new policy language regarding nursing to allow staff to be, it's in compliance with state law. But it allows staff to, um, you know, conduct nursing multiple times a day on work time. And so having that adequate space is, is important.
One room, two rooms, three rooms?
Um, I mean, we have it as one right now, but I'm not excluding that. Planning exercise will continue to take place.
So there's one in the, in this building and one in that building?
We have one estimated right now for the courthouse and law enforcement center, but.
Then nothing.
I'm not, I'm not saying that.
Then I'm gonna be on Julie's side.
Seventy thousand dollars for a room that needs to be about that big? I don't know.
And then, and we don't have anything provision over at social service then.
I would say it's included in the cost per square foot at that area.
Yeah, so right now.
We just didn't break it out separately.
Yeah.
Cause we didn't wanna get criticized.
Some of these things.
It's too late, John.
Here I come.
I'm joking.
We had, we had to break it out because we were parsing out this area so much. We had to know what areas we were trying to actually include in the courthouse. And so we just said, okay, we don't necessarily have square footage allocated for a mother's room anywhere. While the cost per square foot that we're covering on some of the other renovation areas throughout here. And the law enforcement center could include it. We didn't want to unintentionally exclude it, and so we put a separate line item in there for it.
Paul, did you have something?
Uh, it was discussed in the family services where it could potentially go, so.
Okay, good.
And, and I, I believe when you look at that number, you're basically building that room out of whole cloth, basically, right? So if we were able to reuse some existing space that maybe had some of that plumbing in place, that number comes down. So, for example, if, now, don't say that we need to do this, but if we were to move.
I just, I just can't get over the costs of. A woman needs a room, she doesn't wanna go into the restroom to nurse or to pump. She doesn't wanna sit in the break room to nurse or to pump. Okay, so then we provide a separate room called a mother's room. Which, what, what are we putting in there? A recliner, a big screen TV, we have a refrigerator, we have a sink. Um, how much square footage is required by state mandate?
I don't think this is required by state mandate right now, cause we're not building, is that correct or not?
Um, I, I'm gonna withhold that answer, I'm not sure. I think there's probably, we could look at it at the rehabilitation code and say it's grandfathered in, but I don't.
Andrew, what were you gonna say?
What I was gonna say is if, if the county attorney's space was to move upstairs, there is, um, a room in here where they already have a water line running. That, you know, would maybe have less of an impact as far as the, the plumbing costs. If the county attorney's room or county attorney's office stays where it is, an option could potentially be. If I can get this to be a little bit more precise, Jonathan, can you just go to the next slide for me?
No, I was huge.
Um, you know, the, the break room is here, you know, maybe something off of here, I don't know. We will, it's one of those things we need to look into further detail on to find where the most cost effective place to put it is. But if you had to do it out of nothing, that's what the estimate is based on.
Well, and I think some of these questions are for the next phase.
Yes.
I mean, some of this is gonna get, this is gonna go here, and this is what the cost would be to put it here, this will go here, you know.
No different my public entry.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we're, we're, we're splitting hairs a little bit at this point, cause everything is a little too vague.
Yeah.
The next step will break.
One here, one there, one there, seventy times three, that adds up in a big hurry, and what am I getting for that?
Glad a woman brought it up, cause I'm not.
Yeah. A little, a little room to go and sit for fifteen minutes and.
I look at, at as prevention for the future, nursing is very important. So I think anything we do to help others nurse is important. However, that doesn't mean I don't agree that seventy thousand dollars is a lot of. Okay.
Dan.
Does that answer your question a little bit?
It started the conversation anyway. Because I, I just wanted to, and Danny brought up my question about the police department. Why in the world would we be including that? That shouldn't have been.
Right.
I do think Steve makes a valid point, though, once we get past this and get down to non-conceptual. And we start seeing actual dimensions on everything, a lot of these costs may change. Is that fair to say? May change?
It'll shift.
Yeah. So we spend less on the mother's room, but we might spend more on this room over here because.
Yeah, he's trying to give us the parameters of the overall project, but the next step with a construction manager and stuff. Starts to break that down per area, per project, per. And some are gonna, it's gonna shift or adjust and.
These are just some of the things that really jumped out, at least at me. And I had a question, if you look under project soft costs.
Oh, we're going there now.
Right to the money part, huh?
Uh, before we do that, I, I do wanna just respond to Danny's anxiety a little bit and others. That the reality is, um, as a part of our design process. This is certainly not the last time we're gonna be talking to department heads or staff even for that matter. And so while I think this recommendation really filtered it down to what the needs are. Now, we get the opportunity to go back to staff and departments and say, okay, here's your space. Let's work together to figure out how it can be best suited for your operations and your staff and things like that. So there's, there's several rounds of feedback that we'll continue to get to help. You know, maybe future proof it a little bit from it being wrong the day you open it up, right?
It's a continual conversation.
Yep. Okay, cost.
Okay.
I'm gonna exit full screen here, use the right mouse.
Cause we're a year and a half to two years from occupancy.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's gonna be some discussions in there.
Hey, so soft costs was your question, Julie?
Down at the bottom where it says project soft costs, we have a project contingent, contingency figure. And a fees figure.
Mm-hmm.
What are those two things and why are they identical?
Um, mainly because when we estimate soft costs, we're really estimating it based on a percentage of the total construction cost. So though all of those soft costs are really yet to be defined. But it's a typical percentage on top of a construction value that we usually see. It's usually gonna be between twenty to thirty percent of the construction cost is gonna be those soft costs.
So that's what you consider wiggle room? Like, we, we make that here, we make that, what not?
Just tell her what, what soft costs are.
Yeah.
Sure, so it's owner costs, it's anything that's not bid out. So the testing, balancing, commissioning, you know, that's actually having a separate contractor come in. And make sure the building is, the airflow and the water and all that stuff is working the way that it's supposed to. Plan reviews, special inspections, that's really the cost of si- having the state review the plans or the local, you know, building official. As well as hiring a separate company, um, to do concrete testing that's code required and things like that. So when you do the frost footing at that new entryway at family services. They'll have to take core samples and you'll have a separate, um, you know, hired directly by the county. To test those samples and make sure they're in compliance with our specifications.
And that's twenty percent, what, a percent?
All of the soft costs are gonna be between twenty and thirty percent, so that's what that two point, roughly two point nine million is.
How can, how can contingency costs be identical to fees, or that's just, that's just a?
It's just because we said it's approximately ten percent. If you look at the construction costs, nine, two, seven, six, typically it's ten percent. So we're saying ten percent contingency, that doesn't mean you're gonna spend all of that. And fees is around ten percent, that's between construction management, architectural fees. Potentially maybe some other FFNE or technology fees as well can be wrapped in there. Um, so again, it's just an estimate of approximately ten percent of that construction cost. But again, I think there'll be further discussions with administration and core planning group about how those costs actually break down. And it not, it's not just the checks written as soon as you approve it. That's, those are all items that the county has to decide upon.
I just wondered why in all of my estimates, why are those identical?
Where, where the fees, the fees are seven point five for you guys, right?
Yep.
The, in the literature, and is the other two and a half the construction manager? Is that what? Is using that kind of that?
Budgeting for that, but I think it, it kinda depends.
But that's the two big ones, right, for the fee part? And then contingency is basically just ten percent of whatever happens, you know? Something happens there, maybe a slight improvement there, there is some wiggle room there, but usually ten percent. Anybody who's built anything usually gets kinda eaten up.
Yeah, it's, it's industry.
But there is. But there is possible wiggle room, but usually it's, you know.
They're gonna bust into a wall and say, oh my god, look what we found here.
It's kinda like the sign on the old machine shop, repair shop where it says, you know, price per hour. And then price if you watch and price if you advise, it keeps going. Or you ask questions and.
And the key thing on the.
Micromanage to hire the price gets.
The key thing on the contingency right now is a lot of the, the square, price per square foot are, are general numbers. But as we get into the design, we get a better sense as far as exactly what these areas are gonna cost. And then when we bid, we get a better sense again, and then when we actually do construction, we get the best sense because now the work is done. That's where the contingency kinda gets potentially used up. As we get into the design and we're getting a better sense, well, maybe it's not a hundred and eighty dollars a square foot in this area. Maybe it's really a hundred ninety or two hundred dollars a square foot in this area. As we, you know, as, as Commissioner Johnson said, you bust into a wall and you find something you did not expect to be in there. Well, now there's more cost that goes into just resolving that problem. Lastly, as you go into design and maybe even into construction, you start to say, hey, we really need another room in this area for this thing. That we weren't necessarily thinking about earlier on, um, that, so those are all the types of things that come up. That cause us, that cause us to potentially have to use that contingency. Ideally, we wanna use none of it, but.
So, so but if we, if we find an unexpected cost that you're looking at a lot of money. Can we change something else to make up that as we go along, or no?
Well, and I think.
It depends, I mean, it possibly, we, we might be able to find savings by not doing something else elsewhere, but we may not.
Hopefully that's.
On Jonathan's.
Otherwise we'll be below our budget, I'm sure what you're getting at.
Well, and I think it's fair to say too that through the process, if you find, okay, we projected to move our design. To move the bathrooms here, but now once we open up the building, we can actually save some money by leaving them over here. And we can redesign it, I mean, you'll bring, you know, and that'll save us some dollar, I mean, I think you're gonna, you're gonna bring them items forward too. So sometimes there's areas where we can make some ground too, you know.
For the soft costs is seven percent usually the norm for technology, is that just a number?
It's been going up.
Oh, really?
Over the course of.
I mean, it's technology and furnishings, right, yeah, you know.
When you think of technology, remember when I asked Ray County, how many miles of CAT five was used? He couldn't remember, but he said it was miles of CAT five.
Probably zero, cause I'm hoping they were putting CAT five E or six, not five.
Is that the new?
It's an algae joke.
Mary would be dying laughing right now, buddy.
Okay.
It's a trick question.
Any other questions?
Prefer watermelon getting squashed than that one.
So the, the second item after we get through the approval today of the concept is gonna be approval of the proposal from Wall to do the design. Which is coming in at seven and a half percent of the construction cost. Jonathan and I had had a conversation about is seven and a half percent the right amount? What you had said was some of these larger renovations where a lot more work is going into it, eight and a half may be more appropriate. And we ultimately decided that seven and a half would probably be where it's at. Um, as we look at that as well, if we make the change and include the county attorney's office up here on level four. Uh, they determined there would be no additional design cost for that work.
So basically what you're saying is this is Wold's cap number. Is what, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand or wherever it's at, I can't remember.
Seven forty-six, I think.
Not to exceed, the cost seven forty-six.
And by a little chance, if it actually is under, does a seven and a half, is a seven point five get, uh, times whatever that under is? If there was that chance or not? You know, so you got the cap, but is there, is that sliding both down or is that just a fixed fee?
Fixed. Now, I will say if, let's say we get through schematic design and instead of nine some million. We're at twelve, and everybody agrees that that's okay, I'm not suggesting that. Let's say we're at twelve, everybody says, yeah, let's move forward, that's a pretty good change from nine to twelve. And so I think we would have to talk about what our effort would be at that point to change that degree of scope. The same is true if we get to that point and instead of nine, we're at six and a half million for the whole thing. I think that that's fair.
It's not fixing or?
I'm saying at the early stage, if we find that our budget is that far off, we would suggest a change, up or down. But at a certain point, once we start designing and meets the scope that we talked about, the fee's fixed after that point.
So the fixed fee portion of it is seven hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred dollars. The, the balance of it, um, is for reimbursable expenses, mileage, printing. All the different things that could be potentially reimbursed, postage, that sort of stuff. So there is a possibility that we're not gonna spend that full twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars on reimbursable expenses. So there could potentially be some savings there, but and as Jonathan said, if, once we get to that point where we haven't. Where we've refined the scope a bit further and we say, okay, the cost is now gonna be six and a half million because we've cut massive things out of it. Then we would take a look at the other way or vice versa. If when they get to the bidding process and it turns out to be ten and a half million dollars, they're not gonna come back to us and say, you guys owe us more money because we're not at seven and a half percent. Cause it's really based on the effort that they're estimating has to go into all this work and to design in this.
There's another thing in here too, um, how much usually, uh, occurs with through your, like, your type of firms? As far as interior design and audio visual systems, because eh, way I read that letter, that is extra. If we ask.
From here, yep.
Okay.
It's budgeted for in the soft costs as I suggested earlier.
Okay.
Probably within the FFNE, FFNE technology.
Oh.
That's cost for the equipment, but also the design, but that could come out of that, fees number two depending on.
So it is budgeted in there, so it, but it's just not in your.
Our basic services excludes AV design and FFNE services, design.
But usually that, you use that anyway, that expertise anyway when you're doing this or not, really?
I, I would say it, it's very, it very much depends on what existing relationships the county may already have. You know, if your internal IT department works with the vendor all the time for little projects like that. A lot of designs, they'll just work with that, and we don't have to do anything at that point. We just say, we're gonna provide rough-in and data wiring to that spot, but they're gonna do the design for the screen. The, you know, the AV, all of that stuff is just the vendor that you're already use, so that happens a lot. Sometimes there isn't anybody, so that we can help with that. The same is true for furniture, if you're working with a vendor that, you know, helps come in and change out workstations and things like that. And there's a good relationship there, you could certainly choose to just work directly with them, um.
But regardless, it's in the soft cost as is, so it's not like in an addition.
No.
That's my biggest word, I don't care who gets.
We just didn't want, we don't want somebody to assume that we're designing that as a part of our basic services, that's all, that's the reason we're pointing it out.
Gotcha.
As we get through schematic design, we'll determine who's gonna be putting that effort in. And then either you'll be looking at another vendor and what that's gonna come out of. Or we might be coming back and saying, okay, it was decided that Wold's gonna help with this, and so that's what the separate, is a separate proposal.
I, I don't care who does it, I was just wondering if it's like another addition that we didn't have figured in soft costs, but that answers that.
Good question.
Okay, any other questions? So what we will be determining today for recommended motions would be. It says with or without the design alternative. And as I look at the chart on page two here of our proposal, one, the basic change is. Whether or not we accept the one hundred and fifty thousand to move the attorney department.
Correct.
That's correct.
And that has to be determined today.
Um, I think it should, so that we don't have to come back and have another discussion on it. We can wrap up the concept and.
So we can move ahead with the.
So, Madam Chair, what I would suggest, because we've had some discussion on that piece, is prior to taking a motion on that one, maybe pulling the board and. And you get a sense of where everyone's at at that specific piece, and then we can do a, a formal motion on the concept.
Okay, how's everyone feeling? Paul?
Um, I am reluctant on the, the move, simply because I watched the deputy when I said, how many people come in? For jury assembly, and he was completely nodding with me, no, forty-five to fifty, you're saying we have room for thirty. I just, I don't see the space that's needed there. I can't envision it, okay? You know, I was on a jury, so I understand how that works, and I think about somebody sliding off into the offices like I suggested. Yeah, they're looking, they want everybody in front of that judge right now, not somebody on the phone or on a computer or on a laptop, so. My gut feeling says that's, I can't, I can't go with that one.
So you're gonna suggest the first.
Yeah, the original plan, yep.
Julie?
I guess.
I'm in, I concur.
Okay.
With that.
Steve?
I don't think we'll find a time that we're gonna move that county attorney any cheaper. And to me, the, the, Paul, your concern is addressed through management of the, of the, uh, jury deliberate. I mean, that's just managing people at that point.
It is.
I think there's space down there to, to house them and if they can't go into the office.
Easily remove some walls for very minimal cost, I mean, we're already covering doing all the mechanical systems down there. And so you're not really looking at the effect of a cost per square foot that has on everything. If just removing some walls makes it a larger space, that would be pretty minimal cost.
Okay.
I, yeah, no matter what, the number's big regardless, and I've, you know, you have to have your coming to Jesus moment about that. But increasing it by one percent where you can actually positively affect all your employees. I think is kind of a bargain price, I'm kinda crazy I'd say that. And it just feels like if you have this potential area here and it's vacant most of the time. There's a part of me that just says that seems a little silly, that you have some good office space here that's only used for a select period of times. Rather than every day. And in this environment of having a hard time recruiting attorneys to a small county, I don't know if that would help or not. But I think it would be more of a positive impact than a negative, and maybe that itself is enough benefit to the county.
Okay, I, uh, I'm in agreement with Paul and, uh, Julie at this point, so anybody else wanna?
Will we take these in two separate motions, Beth?
Yep, we're gonna first vote on which concept, and then the second vote will be on the design proposal, correct?
Correct.
So we would be looking for a motion for one of the design concepts.
I move to approve the facility concept master plan for renovation of the courthouse, law enforcement center and family services center. Without the alternative design.
Okay, I hear a motion by Julie, do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Second by Paul, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. Um, now we are looking for a motion for the design, move to approve the proposal for the design, right?
Yep.
Bidding and construction. Not to exceed seven hundred and forty-six thousand.
Okay, with, with the verbiage not to exceed, so there is a little flexibility with that number.
Well, I guess.
Yeah.
Not really. Madam Chair, I'll make the motion, uh, move to approve the proposal from old architects and engineers for design bidding and construction. Administration services in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I hear a second?
I will sec, I'll go ahead.
Second by Commissioner Reddison, any discussion? Anybody wanna move that figure down or anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so next steps are the design, right? And then.
So we're gonna release an RFP for construction management services, um, and work on securing that contract as well.
Okay.
And it's one of the next steps.
And this facility committee will keep moving, meeting?
Yeah.
Yep.
And are those meetings set up yet or no?
We haven't established it yet.
No.
Okay.
One question, uh, as we're still involved here, is that ever gonna evolve in terms of if, if some? Will that ever move any of these individuals if you say, if we come in a little cheaper to moving the attorneys up? Because it, it, in a way, it was a disadvantage for the, this to be bopped on to the last second. Because you did, you know, you were able to give the, the advantage to the administrator, the land, to this. We singled out the attorneys and made them, you know, have to stay. Is there gonna be any wiggle room in terms of when the design comes in, if the budget is a little more softer than the twelve-three? To include that into the, the, the next overall design?
Well, I would think everything's.
I think everything is, but I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say, I don't think we just picked on county attorneys here, I mean.
It just happened to evolve that way.
Well, because it came up after the initial concept that we would look at it more at the last.
It's actually probably my fault on that, I probably pushed it hardest to look at, I mean, I, I mean, I.
Everybody gave up some, everybody gave up something, but I think all of this is gonna be open as far as we can, right? I mean, I still would like to not see this boardroom here, but here we are, so.
Yeah, well, that will never probably happen.
Probably not, but I'm, I'm used to it, I guess, so.
But that's, that's on the table too, as they start to look at things and the amount of space needed by our renters over there. If some of that changes, I don't know if there'd be room for a boardroom.
So is there a timeframe here then? That's what's my question.
Yeah, I think we're probably, we're probably looking at about a six month design timeframe for it. And so six months of design, it's probably, uh, the, the fact that it's a phased construction project. Means that it's gonna happen in kind of chunks, and so I would anticipate we're at about a year of construction.
So when you say, and I don't wanna prolong this, but when you say phased, well, we start over there, start over here. So when you say, and I don't wanna prolong this, but when you say phased, will we start over there, start over here?
Yeah.
We don't know, we'll start at family services.
You can move those folks out.
Right.
And.
Makes sense.
At first. The idea of renovating social services and, um, public health. Is a little bit more challenging because we haven't necessarily found a spot for them yet. And so one idea is that you renovate the annex, you move some family services and public health functions into that new space. While you're renovating the rest of family services, then they move in, then land use moves in. Then you renovate the courthouse. So there, there's a couple of different ideas we've looked at, but we'll continue to explore that.
And we'll keep the public abreast of this as we move along.
Absolutely. Well, and, and to Commissioner Chief Obine's saying, I think we have to remember, we have to be reexamining. Every element of this all the time. So could something change? Absolutely. We may say, hey, whoa, when we see the actual design. And so I just hope we all keep an open mind and.
I agree.
You know, or we'll have to relook at things as we go. I take that from experience just recently.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's, it's incumbent on us to meet the budget that we talked about. And the design that's now been approved.
Yeah.
So that comes with advantages and disadvantages. If we get to the point where the design and the concept that's been approved today. Is no longer preferable, we might have to go backwards and start from the back. You know, we can't just move through design process and change mainstream, so.
Yep.
There's an impact there, that's all I'm saying.
Curiosity, how much have we, you know, as far as world costs? How much is, uh, how much have we paid you guys previously to the last, since this new additional stage? Has there been cost always associated with that beginning twenty seventeen? I was curious.
Way, way back when.
Yes, when you first started conversations.
Yeah, there was.
How many dollars have we actually put out to you guys?
I don't recall.
Previous to basically Andrew's time.
Yeah, I don't recall what our previous contract was for the, the master planning. I imagine we were in the ten to twenty thousand dollar range. And this project was, our master plan here was about twenty-eight or something.
Yeah, what twenty was this portion here?
But we're giving half of it back because it's preceding international design.
Picked up some of the old stuff and used here, beca, right?
Yeah, and that, that's why we were able to keep our.
Started over from square one.
Right, and that's why we were able to keep this master plan cost down because we knew that we could, we had value in our previous work, so.
Was this building kind of in that one? It's just we eliminated doing another ones? But there was some cost for sure.
Is there, does that answer your question or are you just curious about?
I was just curious in terms of how much we already put into it without results until now.
Yeah, I mean, we, I, I, I could look and find the actual answer to that question. Say it's twenty to fifty thousand, but.
I don't think it's fifty.
I just don't recall what that original contract was for.
Anything else?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time, everybody. Happy fourth, happy side.
Happy fifth, happy fifth.
Thanks, John.
So it's not cat five, it's data cable.
Madam Chair, do you wanna take a brief break before we go into the next step?
Um, we can.
It's up to you.
Is this gonna be a long conversation?
Five?
Five minutes. Okay, we will take five minutes.
Ten? What, you need ten minutes or fifteen?
I have a meeting, I have a meeting, so let's not.
Oh, okay.
But it was real neat.
We're back in order here.
Uh-oh, well.
So, um, our last thing is we're, we're needing a resolu, what, do you wanna just talk about a little, Andrew?
Yes, so, um, we have before you a resolution which authorizes the conveyance of four fifteen South Ramsey Avenue to the E D A. Which would allow it to go forward for, um, housing redevelopment. This is a, a property that's been looked at. By the hospital board, uh, the property was purchased by the hospital with the, we're using hospital funds with the intention of. Uh, expanding their campus into this site at some point in the future. The hospital board has determined that there is not a need for that. The property is currently vacant, um, and there's a desire to use it for, um, housing redevelopment. Um, I believe through, um, a project that U C A P has going on. So E D A would be the vehicle to be able to do that. They have housing redevelopment authority powers that the county board. Uh, provided them when E D A was created, you know, a couple of decades ago. And so working with, um, our real estate attorneys determined that would be the most appropriate way to go about this. So if the, the board has the desire to pursue these properties for, um, housing redevelopment, adoption of this resolution would be recommended.
Okay, discussion. Paul, you wanna explain a little more?
I, I think we've explained, this'll roll this thing back on the tax rolls. Right now, we get nothing for it. This will evolve into potentially five properties. Of which, let's just use. A number, we'll pull it out of the hat, two thousand dollars each, ten thousand dollars a year, um, of revenue that will come back, so. Um, the U C A P portion, um, yes, that's a hu, housing with, uh, can be sold to folks with a maximum. Annual income of approximately a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, I believe is what it is. I'm just, don't quote me on that because I don't remember. But it's in that neighborhood for a figure that's the maximum amount of money they can earn, so. And as it said in the, uh, saying, this was bought with revenues that were gained through patient care. Um, it is not any levy dollars being used to, um, when that lend was purchased.
I, I have a question for you, Paul. Has it been talked to? I mean, what's the city, is the city going to contribute? In the, you know, maybe it's water and sewer hookups or, I, I mean.
Okay, the.
Every entity that's gonna benefit from this should have a little skin in the game.
Yeah, uh, the city of, uh, Litchfield will help furnish the sewer hookup to these. Um, also, they are helping with the split, okay, cuz that is one parcel. Gotta be divided in a four or five, depending on how big a lots they wanna make. So they're helping to facilitate that so the cost of it's very low.
That was my next question. I didn't realize it was up to five.
You know, if you really, if you drive that one, that's not your normal three hundred foot block. It's, and what I did was when I drove by it, I just counted the houses on the other side of the street. There's five homes on the other side of the street. So you could go five.
Seems tight.
You could go four and make a little bigger lot too, you know, but that's.
Probably depends on the design of the home, is it gonna be?
And I know the Eden Valley homes are a three and a four bedroom.
Are they all a rambler or are they split?
Uh, you know, I haven't really seen.
Probably split levels.
Was the discussion ever to actually sell the lot? I mean, I, I'm, there's a part of me that I'm having a struggle with that, no matter what, it was all hospital money, period. I understand that. But, you know, in the same sense, it's like going, okay, maybe, you know, you would give it back to the county because. Essentially, the county hospital's there to provide so, you know, affordable healthcare to your county. Yet you have a big pot of the hospital, yet you're gonna give away an asset, just like that because of.
There was a discussion at, I'll answer your question, there was a discussion at the board meeting about why we own so much property. And obviously, it went back to before our curtain, hospital administrator where they didn't know what, what forward plans were gonna go. And now, we're emptying the properties because we don't have enough housing to bring employees in. We're losing employees cuz there's nowhere to live, so some of them are gonna use that. And then Paul brought up this project. And he brought it up to the hospital board and it passed unanimously thinking that would be a good way. To help address the housing shortage as well as getting, um, property back on, on the, uh, property tax rolls. And then we found out we had to go, so then you have, I don't know, this has been Paul's project. He said he talked to Steve and. E D A thought it was a good idea and the city thinks it's a good idea.
Steve and I sat in on a, a meeting with Representative Baker, Representative Erdol, uh, Deb, uh, from U C A P. Uh, so we had a lot of entities and when.
Year and a half ago?
Yes.
It was meant.
And we're still not, they're gonna go and they're a go in Eden Valley, so, um, they were short money. And by the donation, it made it, uh, give it a chance to keep moving forward. Um, Representative Erdol, uh, well, I don't know if that's part of that money that's tied up in the state. But he was very successful in, uh, giving us additional funds, but we still had to get our costs down to a certain point. And this was one of the avenues where we could put together a package that would help ensure that these things get built.
Where did the land for the Eden Valley project come from?
It is on purchase, yeah. They had, they had a, they identified a couple lots within the Meeker County side of the line.
But it wasn't donated land?
Nope.
To the project?
No.
Did?
She, uh, didn't, didn't, she just, they're like twenty, twenty. Didn't she present on this and she told us the.
Different?
Yeah, yeah. Well, one meeting was in, maybe it wasn't, I was thinking of the board meeting, but. Twenty-six and twenty-one or twenty-two thousand was what they paid for the lots.
Two lots?
Yep, and they're actually not purchased yet, I know.
Yeah, so roughly forty-five thousand, forty-six, forty-seven thousand for the two lots.
Yeah.
And this is the same kind of project that you're contemplating for this piece on South Ramsey?
Three, I think are, three are approved for, through U C A P for Litchfield, so. There'd be room for an additional one or two or.
Yeah.
I had, I had a real problem with this. I, I was upset about this. Um, I can't understand, I'm, I'm with Danny on this. If I, if I work my farm. And I earn a profit and I go out and buy a piece of property for potential expansion. Why on earth would I down the road give that away and not sell it? It was purchased for a hundred and forty thousand dollars back in two thousand nine, this piece of property. Hundred and forty thousand dollars of, what I consider Meeker County money. Maybe it didn't come out of the tax rolls, but it was through the profits of a Meeker County employees. Through an entity which is owned by Meeker County, which is our hospital. I look at what lots are selling for within the city and around the city of Litchfield. Why, I don't understand, why would we want to give that away?
It's community giveback. It's, it's paying back the citizens that use the hospital in a way that's going to. Yeah, you're right, you could sell it, sure, collect thirty, forty thousand dollars, but that probably would stall this particular project. The city of Litchfield already has over seventy lots for sale that aren't being built on. So what we're trying to do is jumpstart this project by saying, hey, we'll help you make this budget. Give something back to the community because that is who made that money for the Meeker County Hospital.
But Meeker County Hospital, future employees are not necessarily going to live on these lots. Anybody can come to town.
That's correct.
So I'm, I'm.
I have another question too, kind of more of a philosophical question as far as the, the, the hospital goes and stuff. If we, the county now that we approved this, uh, this remodeling thing. And we need about four million in, uh, that we'll have to bond for. Would the hospital consider, you know, taking a loan for our county for maybe a couple of points less? As far as their contribution to the county then? Cuz we're gonna eventually get the cash anyway if it does sell. So it'd be a chance and for the hospital to actually give back to all the county rather than just a mo, it's more, a smaller proportion of them. Cuz say if you went to get the bond for five and we gave, uh, it's a little bit off the topic, but it's, I've been. This whole thing I've been wrapping around trying to, you know, get the synergy together where there's positive both ways, but if we said, hey. Chairman Oberg of the hospital board, would you do a three percent loan or something, whatever, two points and save the whole county money? With hospital funds that were basically created by Meeker County? Would the hospital be kinda in favor of something like that too?
I, I absolutely can't answer that, but it was certainly a meeting, that's off the topic from this, obviously, but.
Yep, I understand, but it's the same kind of mentality that we're talking about, we're giving.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer you. I think we should, could certainly sit down and talk about that, but I cannot tell you. Whether I'm chairman, Paul's on there too. We have a, uh, no, I mean, I'm not.
Oh, come on, I wanna see you go on.
I wanna see if you're gonna be an advocate of it or not.
I may be, I may be.
Yeah, no, I.
But it depends on where the clinic is at, you know, how many bills, what are, there's a lot of things. That hospital can spend money, you know, rapidly. So it's certainly a discussion we can have on another day. I'm not opposed to having the discussion. I don't think Paul is opposed.
I think you and I've already discussed it, that it would be a good idea if it could happen. We didn't know if it could even legally happen. Whether the hospital could borrow. Remember in our discussion, we wondered that?
Yep.
But.
I am not opposed to the discussion, not at all.
If we're making, if we're, if we're getting paid from the bank interest, what would be the difference, you know, so but like.
I knew, I'm being on the.
I don't know about the legality of it however. It might be, it might be something, Andrew, when you talk to Kurt, you might wanna just feel him out a little.
Well, and how about, we just last week had a meeting right here where the Wellness Center wanted. One point eight million from the hospital.
Are you prepared to do that?
No.
Okay, I was just checking.
And I, as far as conversations go, one point eight. Why give that then to the Wellness Center if maybe that could be given to a project that would involve our social services?
Well, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you a standard answer that as chairman. I don't know who thinks, I'm not gonna mention the one point eight, but Wellness Center has to do with health.
Sure.
So, Centricare for instance, or whoever, health partners will come in and they'll buy up hospitals. When they do, they like to see the money go towards something for health. So, in other words, if they give you thirty million dollars, they just don't wanna op your, want, want you to operate your county. For a year without a levy. They want it to be health dollars. So that's how the Wellness Center fits in to the hospital. As far as the one point eight million, I don't know where that discussion is going. But I, do you? I mean, I don't know.
It's a discussion for the hospital board.
It's a discussion for the first, for the hospital board.
Right, which you're the chair.
Right.
But there's a difference what you're saying, Danny. You're saying borrowing.
Yeah.
With a payback. It says the one point eight's a gift, so it probably is a whole different.
And I'll be honest, I wanted to use this as a, a, a point to actually bring this up into a topic. Where I could segue from this part where you're deciding to give to some individuals through the U C A P, which I understand. You gotta, I, I struggle with that too, like, it's like going, cuz it's an asset. And earlier you're asking for an asset from the hospital board for a keyless padding in terms of COVID or something, I don't know. What was that, two hundred thousand or a hundred thousand?
The wireless communication system?
Something where it's.
We didn't get that, did we?
No.
No.
And, and, and bear in mind, and I'm, I'm not here to defend the hospital, although I will.
Sure.
Um, they, we did not know where we were going during COVID. There was a lot of, you know, we didn't know what funding was coming in. We didn't know what med, if we had to pay back Medicare dollars. All of that is kinda straightened out now, right? So, some, some of the situation has changed.
Like I said, I understand exactly how you're doing it, why you're doing it, you're part of U C A P, this is opportunity. I always see that, but there's a part of me that says, okay, this is still an asset, and why give away this asset if you're asking for it?
Can I elaborate on that a little bit? I, I don't, I think the, what I. If I struggle with anything on it, it's, and I think this is what you're saying is, what are we, what is the county? What are the citizens of the county getting for it versus, versus, this is, you'd like to see a little broader. If we're gonna give something away, it should benefit a broader.
That's my point, period.
Is my following you on that?
That's it, that's it.
Well, in theory.
Not necessarily hospital employees will purchase and live in these homes. It can be anyone.
So, so you, so you keep mentioning hospital employees. Hospital employees work for a payroll check. Just like everybody in this county works for a payroll check. Will they have enough opportunity to buy the house? Maybe. I, I have no idea, but I think the goal, speaking for the hospital board, was to give something back to this community. To improve housing, which by the way, everybody who has to hire staff, including the hospital. We have technicians that are gonna stay in trailers. So housing, no matter what anybody in this town tells you, is an issue. And it's getting bigger, it's not getting better, it's getting worse.
Well, and I think what Paul's saying is, if you put three or four, three families, let's say, that's what the cap project is. You're gonna put three residents in them housing, do they then free up other housing with it? You're taking a pressure off.
Well.
So it, you're, you're making housing available to more people within the community. So you're, you're making housing available to more people within the community. Does that make it, that equates to hospital employees as well as part of that?
Sure it does.
So I mean, it, it's not a direct, hospital employees will be in these three houses, but it will free up housing.
I mean, that's.
Alleviate.
You asked, what does it give back to the citizens of Meeker County? Well, when we put something back on the tax rolls. And collect taxes, we expand our tax base, which goes to every taxpayer citizen.
Whether we give it away or we sell it, it will still go back on the tax rolls. And I like the idea of selling it and having it go back on the tax rolls than giving it away.
That's not a decision that has come from the hospital board that we're gonna sell any. So, right now, the, the houses that were emptied are being emptied, are being emptied for now. If, unless I misunderstood something, so that we have a place to put employees temporarily. That we need desperately at the hospital. So, is that why tenants are being vacated? So they could actually house people, part timers?
Certainly part of it and, you know.
I didn't know, I was always kind of curious.
Part of that, and then I think a lot of stuff was bought up before they had a plan in place by the previous administration. So, now we know that there's certain houses that are not gonna be of use no matter what, so of course. And we're not in the real estate business, so.
And just to be clear, from the EDA standpoint, too, EDA, um, basically, we approve to be the, the liaison. For the process. We don't, we're not involved in the price and the sell, you know, and any of that kind of stuff. We just, yes, we agreed to.
Does it go through a Realtor then?
We facilitate, no, no. We're, we're approving the sale through EDA. EDA is just a vehicle that's used to do it. So EDA is not involved in any discussion on price or how that's.
Well, just a facilitator.
We're just a facilitator for the process of getting it to Ucap.
It would go from the hospital, it would be given to the EDA, and then the EDA board would give it to.
If they chose to.
This organization.
We'd saw, they would, the, the transfer of title would go through the EDA, that's what EDA does.
And then, what would this organization do with it? Would it then go through a Realtor to sell each lot? Or would the housing be?
The housing is constructed.
By this organization?
Then it is sold at fair market price. That's what the evaluation will be. They will use an appraisal. And that's how they're sold, based on the appraisal.
And then your organization will sell them. It will not go through, I mean, local Realtors won't be able to say, oh, I've got a house for sale on South Ramsey.
I don't know, I, I guess I haven't asked that question. Do you know Steve?
I don't.
There's qualifying, there's qualifications for people, right, that are gonna be able to buy them. In, in other words, if you make two hundred thousand dollars a year.
You're not eligible.
You're not eligible to buy that piece of property. It's for a different income level of people.
Who facilitates the sale though? Is there a commission involved by?
I would say Ucap's handling all the sale. It's, basically it's their property. When they build the home, they're paying for the home, they're building the home, they're buying a lot.
I'm assuming they, they decide who buys it, don't they?
Basically, I, I don't know exactly, well, there's a cap on how much you can make, so there, yeah.
Somebody has to be checking on that.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know the.
I was curious if it would then.
Do, do they sell for whatever the cost is? Is that how it works then?
No.
That's what they're trying to get to.
But that's because of the wage disparities.
There you go. It might cost us three hundred and fifty thousand, but once they do the appraisal, let's say it came in at two seventy-five. That will be the sale price.
Right.
Cause they do not want to affect the market in the area.
My point is, Ucap is not making any money. They're just trying to sell, get affordable homes.
Paul, when this thing got way out of.
That's always a good question.
What, what, when we met a year and a half ago and things started to get out of whack with construction costs. Yeah, they had a number where they were willing to put into this project and it went. Six hundred thousand above that, or, I, it was over a million bucks. On a complete five-house Meeker County project. There was five homes proposed for Meeker County, two in Eden Valley, three in Litchfield. But like I said, a year and a half, two years ago this started. And then with COVID, when the prices got out of whack, it blew their budget completely out of whack. So then they had to go back and.
And then the prevailing wage issue because, yeah, because they, they got the grant for five homes. Okay, that said, that's a total package, because you went over a dollar amount, now you must use prevailing wages. Our contractors in Meeker County are so busy, they don't worry about filling out the survey on prevailing wage because they have enough work. So.
They went to Sterns County, who's Sterns County, that, that blew it farther out, acting into construction costs on top of that, it just kept.
Is there anything there that actually financially helps the hospital by giving that away though? I wouldn't imagine being a nonprofit, but I just don't.
The upkeep, I suppose. They don't have to mow it, they don't have to clean that sidewalk section and stuff. But that's about it, isn't it Beth?
Nothing that I'm aware of. It isn't like the other homes where we've had to put rough saw on it.
Yeah.
They become an expense.
Is it just bare land is what it is?
Bare land. And it's important to hear that the city is willing to penny up something, a little something too, because they have to get some skin in the game also, and it sounds like they are. I think it's an important project and I think that's why it got by the hospital board unanimously, so.
So to kind of get back to that public purpose question, the public purpose is the fact that through this project, more housing will become available. Within the community, which benefits businesses in the community and benefits, you know, residents in the community as well. Yeah, as was mentioned, that those properties come back on the tax roll, but almost more importantly, the fact that, that housing becomes available. For employers to be able to tap into, for a few different, I mean, it's not a lot, but it's a few. And it, um, it's one of the challenges that we regularly hear, you know, when I meet with, you know, Judy from the Chamber or. When I, um, talk with business owners, the fact that there's a lack of housing in the community is a real challenge. And is one of the reasons why they struggle to find employees. That and childcare are the two big issues. So this is an opportunity to at least partially tackle one of those issues.
And, and I understand all that, and my point is just that, you know, when this bonding comes up. I'm be pushing the fact that we can use that same philosophy to say to the Meeker Memorial, hey, here's an opportunity to give back. To all the county. You have so many million sitting there in a pot anyway. Some of it will get used or not. You're gonna get what, one percent or something? Here's the opportunity actually to get maybe a little more than what. You're having with your thing, and now you're actually contributing to all the county.
And Danny, I, I think.
That's a fair.
And I, and I both support looking into this to see if we can.
And that's the only reason why I brought it up.
For where the future is of Meeker Memorial's money, that's all, so that's not on the.
It's an opportunity to explore and we'll work with our, our bond consultants to determine whether or not this is a feasible option for us and. Absolutely, we can look into that.
Need to get, if we can, get back to.
Sorry.
No.
No, I'm just gonna be honest, I'm gonna be a very aggressive proponent for that, and I wanna know how our, our board will.
Well, can we explore it first? I don't have to make a commitment today, do I?
No, but I will be putting the pressure on on this one. Because if it's a chance to save one, two percent of this big number.
Well, I think it's huge savings. I think it's a discussion we can have, but that's gonna depend on the future, the future expenses, our future projects at. More, Meeker Memorial, as well as, how much time are you talking about to pay it back?
Well, it'd be whatever, the same as the bond.
See, there's some discussion that has to be had.
My point is, if you're willing to give away an asset, then you should have on the discussion, have actually talked to your. Actual main person who ha, or main group who actually owns the asset. And deal on another broader subject that could actually save big dollars for the county.
I'm in full agreement that we'll have a meeting about that.
And I will be very interested in hearing the results.
Okay, you'll be in the, you'll be in the meeting.
So, um.
Sounds great.
Madam Chair, sir, you are aware, this resolution that's on the table before you today requires a super majority vote, so it requires four commissioners to vote yes.
So let's kind of poll, I'm gonna poll everybody here. Paul's gonna vote?
Yes.
Julie?
Affirmative?
Absolutely not.
I'm gonna vote yes.
Um, I didn't realize this takes a su- super majority right now.
Now you're really on the spot.
But, uh, well, not really.
Sets the precedence for the hospital board that they have. I don't know, I just, the last couple of things that have come down from the hospital board about giving this away and then giving that away.
I, I don't, I, so here we're back to this. I did not, uh, ask John Carlson to present here for one point eight million dollars from the hospital board. He was presenting to the commissioners board, so. I have not heard anybody on the hospital board say that we're gonna give one point eight million dollars to the Wellness Center, to be clear. So what's the other, what's the other thing that's bothering you?
This idea of giving away.
But I just wanna be clear about, nobody has said they're giving, cause you just said.
And I don't think.
What you've heard coming down from the hospital board. That was never mentioned at the hospital board, we just had a meeting.
I don't think Kurt was, was too excited about that.
Chime in here a little bit. I'm, I'm in support of the, of the proposal with the land. And I also agree with Danny on the, on the prospect of researching a, a way to collaborate on a loan. If you will, to help offset some of our costs. Just, I think that's a, that's a great balance. I think whenever you're giving something away, um, in that regard, that we should be able to, uh. To reach back and look at, okay, what, what other partnership can we make here between the hospital that's county owned? And, uh, and I think we look into that deeply and, and hopefully we can make something work that benefits both the hospital and us. So I, I'm in support of the housing project.
So to be clear, I'll vote for it. I'm not gonna vote for this giveaway. To promise you that you're gonna be able to get three million dollars.
Exactly, but I wanna.
That's an understanding, right?
Yeah, I, no, that's, that's my.
Certainly open to having the discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. So, so we understand.
And as I read this, it says one acre, which I'm assuming includes that whole section. Not just the three lots that we mentioned in our conversation. And it says, this was generated dollars through the operation of the hospital, and the hospital is an entity of Meeker County. And the county is the owner, and there was a hundred and forty thousand spent to purchase this land.
Land was purchased not from one tax dollar in this county.
No.
It was purchased with money from the hospital.
Yep, yep.
So, and I'm okay with voting this down too, because this is getting into a discussion that.
Madam Chair, move to approve resolution authorizing conveyance of four fifteen South Ramsey Avenue, Litchfield, Minnesota.
Do I hear a second?
Has a resolution.
Do I hear a second to the resolution?
I'll second the resolution.
Question for you, uh, Paul, is it, what's the timelines in terms of, is there any specific timelines for Ucap to get funding? Et cetera, et cetera, for this? If, if it's delayed, would it cause any problems in terms of that? Or do I have time to think about this?
They're working the, uh, two in Eden Valley right now. They're gonna build the two in Eden Valley first.
Okay.
Once they're sold, then they will start in Litchfield. So, is there some time to think on it? Of course.
And, and i- is there any timeline in terms of state funding, whatever Erdahl did? I don't wanna.
That's what we're up against. I believe this grant expires when?
There's, I, I don't have a date, but it's something about this year.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, I know there's urgency.
I just wanted to know if it was time sensitive, but, uh, cause I didn't, honestly, I didn't know you had to have a super majority. So I feel like my vote is more important now, but I don't wanna torpedo it.
I want you to know, your vote is important every time.
Know that. I try to take it, uh, serious, so, but I wanna make sure, is there anything time sensitive? That this won't suddenly torpedo Ucap.
Short, short answer is yes, it is time sensitive. I don't know.
What that timeline is.
Talking about next meeting, right?
Yeah, something like that, yeah, I need some, like, a month.
You wanna table it for a month?
I wouldn't mind if we tabled it.
Then, then let's, then we would need to move to continue, but we have a motion in a second on the floor.
Okay.
Um, you can, I believe you can still move to table it to a date certain, or continue, move to continue the discussion to a date certain.
Okay, let's find a date certain, can we?
And so, you wanna do it at the first meeting in August?
Yep.
And I'll get you in touch with Tiffany.
Actually, maybe we just talk ourselves.
Yeah, but.
I don't have enough information in terms of me, I, there's a part of me that's like Julie that says, I just have a hard time. Understanding why you would give away an asset, you know, because, you know, a wager you made.
It feels like we're getting nothing in return.
It feels like that. And I understand the tax benefits of the housing in that part, but it's.
I have a couple other little issues with it too, that I wouldn't mind having a.
Okay, so, I'll look for a motion to table this till August.
Yes, and I would like to be very clear that when those conversations happen, they are not gonna be a serial meeting, so we'll be very clear about that.
Oh, yeah, of course.
All these conversations will be in cl- strict compliance with the open meeting law.
Madam Chair, I would move to continue this discussion and vote to August what?
Second.
August second of two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Johnson to continue this conversation to August second. Do I hear a second?
I will second that motion.
Second by, uh, Commissioner Schmidt, all in favor?
I oppose, so there you go.
All right.
Danny, if there was one, if you think of questions, get them to me so I can contact Tiffany first.
Yeah.
Give you correct answers and not just answers.
That's what I would prefer, because I understand what you're trying to get at. There's a part of me that I have a hard time saying, okay, we're gonna give away this asset. When I know sometimes they come to us and ask for some, and it's like going, I, you know what I mean?
In order to avoid the, the potential issue for a serial meeting, if commissioners have specific questions they would like answered by Ucap, send them to me.
Okay.
I'll make sure they get addressed.
And I will, so I should just.
Just send it to me, and we'll, we'll forward them along and make sure Tiffany addresses them.
I like that, compliance.
Compliance. Only time I do compliance is when it has to do with my wife's.
No, that's contract.
That doesn't happen, no.
Nice this year.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Board of Commissioners, oh, do you have another report?
I have a really brief item, uh, and, and Paul can talk to it too if you would like, but last week we received notice from DHS. That they selected two plant, family and children's in Minnesota Choices Products, the, the medical assistance programs. If you recall, the family and children's, you adopted a resolution stating your intent to have a sole source of rest. Uh, this is similar to what was done with the SNBC and senior products, based on the direction that we received. Where in those products, we're gonna pursue the mediation and appeal that, uh, to DHS. Um, and we'll go from there and let you know if anything comes up.
I don't have anything unless you have questions.
That's kind of what we've been through the whole time, only it's, sounds like the situation is deteriorating a little. We have a meeting Thursday. We don't, normally don't meet in July, but they're having the meeting because of what's going on.
The Prime West Board, yeah.
Prime West.
If you have a specific question that you would want us to ask at the meeting, please let us know, so.
I'm pretty familiar with what, what's occurring there. Really, we're just waiting for, um, that legislation to, or excuse me, not legislation. The court case to be ruled upon.
Yep.
I think that's gonna set the, the course and the direction for any mediation or what's going forward. We have not received any, um, information regarding when mediation will take place or with the process for that mediation. I think everybody's waiting to hear what's occurring with that.
Well, as you know, they did have testimony, um, June, last week in June.
I didn't listen.
And I didn't listen either, we could've, but we're still hoping to get a summary judgment from the.
It sounds, it sounds as if, uh, testimony from DHS was not that compelling. But that's biased review from what I've heard, so I don't know.
Well, we have a very favorable judge, from the standpoint of, he used to, he understands counties.
Yes.
So I think that plays well for us in this particular issue, I hope it does.
Yes.
And I think our lawyers did a very good job of presenting our case.
All right.
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Paul, do you wanna go first?
Oh, sure.
If you're not ready, we'll move on to Julie, cause I gotta be at a meeting here, sure.
All right, um, one watershed, one plan, public meeting. Actually had a pretty good turnout down in McLeod County. Of course, you know, we're a small player in this compared to a couple of the other counties who have most of the. But, um, questions were good, uh, from the, the folks that were there. And, um, everybody seemed to be understanding the program, is how it goes forward. So I thought that was a pretty good meeting. Um, Ucap, uh, we had a meeting last Thursday night and we toured the Bright Lights Head Start Facility in. Wilmer, and I was really, really impressed. Um, about, number one, about the numbers that are there, how many young people actually attend, uh, preschool there. So, um, or Head Start, I should say, and the facility was, um, given to them. By their cooperative electrical company, and not only was it given to them, they were given. And not only was it given to them, they were given basically a blank check to remodel it. And said, we're gonna pay for this, it's important to the community and we're gonna pay for it. And so, that was, that was pretty neat to see. Um, CPT Monday, uh, meeting last Monday, I think the big thing there is they have hired a director. Uh, unfortunately, it came from another.
Supporting hands, he's.
Uh, very important entity within our area, supporting hands. But Joe Flattin comes with very good recommendations and I think we've finally, I hope that we have the direction we need to move forward. Then I had a CCT meeting on Wednesday, um, and that was basically. Uh, to approve the budget for the preliminary budget that they submit to the state. Uh, for for their funds to operate CCT on, so. Um, it's, I'm not gonna go into the details, cause we had like five pages we went through in great detail. Um, the biggest unknown as well, any any of you who have your own business or or if you farm or anything. The fuel price is the, cause that's face fact CCT, it's all about fuel. And fuel and equipment, so. That's about it for me.
Okay, we had our last meeting, regular meeting on the twenty-first. That afternoon, June twenty-first, Paul and I had a personnel meeting here at the courthouse. We heard from the sheriff, the highway department, social services, the attorney's office and public health, all of those directors. They were all asking for additional employees for their departments for the upcoming budget cycle. Much discussion took place. Uh, we agreed to a number of employment additions for these various departments. And those position descriptions will be coming before this board for further discussion. Later on now, this summer, if I'm correct.
Yeah, as part of the budget process.
Okay. Um, then we had our work session on the twenty-eighth. We heard from public health and the wellness center people. That same afternoon at uh, one thirty, I had an extension meeting at the fairgrounds. We met our new employee, Emily Hanson, she's the horticulture person. She'll be filling the horticulture position. She was introduced, so that was good. Judy Halterstrom from the Chamber gave a presentation about marketing hometown America. Multiple handouts and lots of information that was nicely done. We had a discussion about the budget. There's a little bit extra left over in the budget. Because we did not have a full-time horticulture person for half of the year, so there's a little bit of a wish list and some ideas. Um, presented where they would like to use those funds. And they're gearing up for the county fair, which will be August fourth through the seventh.
Neil McCoy's gonna be there.
Yes, so get your tickets.
Get your ticket. Steve?
Uh, I actually only had.
Were you done, Julian?
Yes, very good.
I only had a few meetings, uh, I went to Manana Township, uh, met with them for their township meeting. Um, basically, everything was going well there. They're actually upgrading some playground equipment, things like that. Something they're funding and stuff there, so from nineteen fifty to present. Um, then we also had a meeting on the market study with Tessa. We had um, talk and kinda gave us a preliminary snapshot of what she's uncovered. Um, on some of her wage study numbers and she'll give a more detailed report.
At the next meeting, that's what we're shooting for.
So, so I won't go too in-depth into that, but she kinda gave us just a quick snapshot of what she uncovered so far. On a Grove City Care meeting, uh, just our monthly meeting. Things seem to be going pretty good there, since they're they're working. Um, the biggest thing, we've had a lot of Grove City Care meetings lately and a lot of them is trying to work with family services. And try and incorporate a more sustainable funding model through some of the work they're doing is reimbursable through the state. And just trying to get them on a platform that they can create a more sustainable uh, uh, funding stream. For the long-term sustainability of their project and the work that they do over there. And then we had the work session. So, that's all I had.
Danny, where were you?
I was nowhere to be seen. Yeah, exactly.
I didn't have much, I had a couple hospital things, um, but I had an H. I had CCT, which I climbed to ten, so Paul went, HRA, I went to that. That was pretty basic. Um, they're trying to wrap up this this voucher conversion. Hopefully, that's gonna be done by July. Um, they talked about uh, the need for housing, of course, like they always do. They're getting, they they got some repairs. That they need to do on their Grove City properties, Steve, that they probably don't, they might need some help with. I told her to call you, Carla, to call you. And then I told her to, or two, because. Um, and other than that, they're doing a review of Carla. I did find out that the RHRA, you know, operates a little bit differently. Carla provides her own office and everything. A lot of HRAs have a separate office with, you know, staff in there. We don't have any of that, so it's kind of a different thing because of the size, we're kinda unique. That was, that was it. I didn't have anything else. I had quite a couple weeks. Anybody else? If not, I would look for a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion.
There you go.
Second, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.